Thank you, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The time is 7:30. This is the regular council meeting for May 28th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Potemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Muir.
Here.
Councilor Rorback.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Graffstein.
I am here, thank you. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by Councilor Rorback. I invite you to stand if you would like.
So as we gather this evening, let's take a moment to reflect on the significance of this time of year. With Memorial Day recently observed, we honor the memory of those who have given their lives in service to our country. Their sacrifice reminds us of the values of freedom and community that we strive to uphold every day. As the school year comes to a close, we celebrate the achievements of our young people, especially those who are graduating, be it from preschool, kindergarten, 5th grade, 8th grade, high school, college, trade school, beyond. They are all stepping into new chapters of their lives, and their hard work and dedication are a testament to the bright future they will help shape. In the spirit of remembrance and celebration, let us also call for peace in our community and beyond. May we work together with respect and understanding, fostering an environment where we can all thrive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to pull the, what is it called, the National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation out of the consent agenda.
All right, thank you.
Communications.
Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I don't know if we need a motion. I thought with the consent agenda, one member could pull it off.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else? All right, then we will go ahead, and we will go right into our public hearing. So first up from the CED Director, it's special approval PSP 24-03 Wash Point Car Wash. It's modification to vacuums at 28245 John R Road. Oh, sorry. Hold on. Do you want to do, do you want to move that up to presentations, then, the gun violence?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. My mistake. All right. Apologies. So, we have, we have, this is for Jane Strunk. I'm going to ask you to come up and take this in a moment. This is the proclamation declaring that the first Friday in June is to be a National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Okay, so whereas every day 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of nearly 18,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 26 more times likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, and whereas Michigan has 1,382 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 13.7 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $16.8 billion each year, of which 380.5 million is paid by taxpayers. Michigan has the 34th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S., and whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all firearms-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities, and whereas cities across the nation, including Madison Heights, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solution, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources, know their communities best, and are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence, whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 7, 2024, to recognize the 27th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, or on June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of her friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2, the first Friday in June, I think that is actually the wrong date here, it's June 7, the first Friday in June 2024, to help raise awareness about gun violence, and whereas by wearing orange on June 7, 2024, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violent victims and survivors, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Rosalind Graffstein of the City of Madison Heights declares the first Friday in June, June 7, 2024, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local community efforts to prevent tragic effects of gun violence and to honor the value of human, give out the value of human life, excuse me. So, I would like to present this to you. All right, so, Ms. Strunk, if you want to come up?
It is.
Great. Well, my name is Jane Strunk. I'm here with Doublezuski and Alice McEag. Did I say your name correctly? We're representing the South Oakland Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. And, we're here to thank you. To thank you, Mayor Graffstein, and thank you council members for proclaiming June 7 as National Gun Violence Awareness Wear Orange Day. The City of Madison Heights has done this every year since 2018, and sitting here in the group is Alice, who was the first person to come to a council meeting and accept the proclamation. So as the proclamation highlights, it's important to honor and remember victims and survivors of gun violence, and to do all we can to end this uniquely American public health crisis. Members of our Moms Demand Action team are available for gun safety and secure storage presentations at city council meetings or groups within your city. We also have our Be Smart program, which focuses on responsible gun ownership. It is effective, well-received, and especially at community events, when volunteers such as myself and others sitting here are able to share information and engage in one-on-one conversation with community members. So if you would like more information about Wear Orange, National Gun Violence Awareness activities, a presentation, or resources, please reach out. If you don't have my contact information, Adam does. He was my contact when I was setting this up, so he knows how to reach me. Also, you could visit besmartforkids.org, and it will tell you in great detail what the Be Smart program is all about. And I invite you to check momdemandaction.org and search for the events link, and you will find a number of activities that are planned for the weekend, the non-gun, non-violent, non-violence awareness weekend activities. So there are some in neighboring communities, if you're interested. So thank you again for proclaiming June 7 National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We truly appreciate it. And this is beautiful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we're also going to hear from Alice, the woman who basically brought this to us years ago.
I just want to say thank you to the Madison Heights City Council Mayor. As someone who comes from a family who was affected by gun violence, I know personally the impact that it has on families, and I really appreciate the fact that the city council is standing in favor of this, standing in favor of supporting ending gun violence. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for your participation in that. We have next, we have the public hearing, and this is from the CED Director.
The applicant and property owner Steve Gunn requests a modification to a previously-approved special approval application for Wash Point Car Wash located at 28245 John R Road. The applicant owns and operates the auto wash and requests an increase in the number of exterior vacuum spaces from four to eight. The property is currently zoned B3 general business. The applicant intends to remove the existing vacuums and install a total of nine VacTech vacuums, which will access via eight angled parking spaces. The additional vacuum will allow patrons on the end to vacuum either side of their vehicle. Based on the angle orientation of the proposed parking lot spaces, one-way vehicle circulation will be required on the site. This will require customers to enter the auto wash after using the vacuums. The turbine, which generates airflow and power to the vacuuming hoses, will be placed inside the auto wash structure. Staff concerns relating to exterior vacuums primarily relate to noise and hours of operation. While the subject sit directly above its residential neighborhood to the west, the auto wash building separates the vacuuming spaces from the adjacent homes. Additionally, the vacuum operating equipment, including the turbine and muffler, will be located within the auto wash structure, which would dampen sound impacts. The zoning board of appeals previously approved the variance to allow exterior vacuums and did not place a condition relating to total number of vacuums. Therefore, additional variance through the ZBA is not required. If city council moves to approve the requested modification to the special approval use, staff recommends including the following conditions of approval relating directly to the site layout and the operation of proposed vacuums in accordance with Section 10.2014K to fulfill the spirit and proposed purpose of the zoning ordinance and the intent of the B3 zoning district. Due to the angled nature of the vacuuming spaces, one-way vehicular circulation shall be required on-site. Adequate signage shall be placed on-site denoting one-way circulation as approved through the administrative site process. Vacuums shall be turned off no later than 8:00 p.m., consistent with the closure of the auto wash tunnel, and motors and mechanical equipment for the outdoor vacuum shall be enclosed within the auto wash building. Details of such equipment shall be provided on a formal building plans when submitted. Any action, either approval or denial, taken should include your precise findings based upon the special approval review standards and criteria.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to open this for public comment, and I'm going to invite Wash Point, if they would like to come and speak first. And then we will open for public comment after that.
Hello, I'm Brian Weichel. I'm the general manager for Wash Point Car Wash, and this is Steve Gunn, the owner and president of Wash Point Car Wash. The proposed site plan for the new centralized vacuum unit at Wash Point Car Wash at 28245 John R will include eight vacuum parking spaces and nine vacuum stanchions that are run off of one centralized vacuum unit that will be located inside of the building. The purpose of this upgrade is to modernize our business model and to provide an upgraded service for our customers. We will also be improving the landscaping in the area for a greener and cleaner look. The stanchions on the end will have one hose, so our customers will not need to cross over their vehicles with the vacuum hoses, and this will allow them to have a more efficient service and improve traffic flow in the area. We currently have canister vacuums installed on our site. There is currently no way to isolate the noise from the canister vacuums from the neighborhood. The centralized vacuum system main motor will be located inside of our building in a closed-off room. This unit is what will produce all of the noise pollution in the neighborhood. It also has a VFD that will help conserve energy and decrease noise. This motor will not continuously run. It'll only turn on when a hose is activated, and it will decrease and increase as different hoses are activated. The vacuums will be turned off at closing hours and resume at opening hours using a timing switch. This is automatic and is not reliant on staff. It'll just automatically turn off at 8:00 p.m. at our closing hours. The studies that Vacutech have done in regard to noise pollution show that its 38 decibels are present 30 feet from the centralized vacuum unit while it's running at full capacity. So every single hose is running. It'll be at 38 decibels. Typical traffic measures 60 to 75 decibels on most city streets. Our current vacuums that we have installed on our site, when they are running, are 60 decibels per unit and are actually located outside in our parking lot. Replacing the canister vacuums with this new centralized unit will decrease noise pollution in the neighborhood. These vacuums will be offered free and will be for paying customers and our unlimited club members only. We will have clear and visible signage about one-way, as well as they are for customers only, and we also have staff present on the facility to enforce this and to improve our traffic flow. In closing, upgrading our vacuums to a centralized unit and providing them free to our customers will improve the quality of our service for our customers, decrease noise pollution on our site, improve energy conservation, and modernize our business model with the current trend in the car wash industry. Do you guys have any questions?
Hold on a second. Do you have anything else you want to present?
No, that's it. Thank you.
You said it all?
Okay. All right, so thank you. I'm going to ask that you take a seat now. I think there are going to be some, no, no, that's fine, that's fine. We're going to have some comments from the public.
If you want to let the public go first, I can wait.
Yes. So, sir, did you have something you wanted to say?
My name is Thomas Puri. I live at 28249 Groveland Street, directly across from the car wash. So they've gave you this good story about upgrading the property and the landscaping. Well, what about the noise from the people who use the vacuums? They say a timer turns off the vacuums when the store, the car wash is closed. We've had plenty of times where people are over there blaring their radios, vacuuming out their cars, trash blowing around the parking lot. In my yard, the neighbor's yard, I talked to a few of my neighbors who are elderly, but they're afraid to come up here because they feel they will get, someone will go after them. So my problem is, now you're going to allow more vacuums, which will allow more traffic, which will allow more people to blare their radios and do their power cleaning and throw their trash, which is not going in the garbage cans. I got proof of this trash in my yard. I've been here 47 years. Finally got rid of McDonald's, which is right next door to my house. Few people knew how much trash I've cleaned up over the 47 years. I'm just tired of this. I am a Vietnam vet. I drove a tank of Vietnam. I wear hearing aids, but at home I don't. And if I can hear all this noise from over there, I can't imagine what people who can hear can hear. And I'm just tired of all the trash. And then there's an episode where we approved this car wash many years ago, and we're told there would be no noise and everything else. Well, a few times a year, Mr. Gunn hires some out-of-state company to come in and suck out his drains, and he has a pumper truck. I've worked construction for years. This thing exceeds the decibels. I went over and asked him, could you please turn this thing off? My windows are rattling in my house, and so are my neighbors. Well, Mr. Dunn says, well, if you're going to call the police, tell them I said hi, tell the mayor I said hi, and get the F off my property. Well, this is not a business owner's way to talk to a neighbor. All I'm asking is, he doesn't need no more vacuums. We had another car wash that's opening up at 12 Mile and Stevenson. They'll have vacuums. Let the customers go over there. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak specifically on this, the car wash situation? Okay, so I'm going to close public comment, and we do have, we do have, we do have an email that's going to be read.
Man, I'm mayor and council persons. I live in a property next to the alley, which is adjacent to the Car Point Car Wash. I have lived in this property for decades. I have had issues with lights on commercial businesses, noise, and traffic from the commercial businesses across the alley and facing John R Road. I've raised my concerns before. I have also raised questions about the ownership and caretaking responsibility of the alley, which years ago served as a buffer between the businesses and the neighboring residential properties. I have never been given a straight answer, and the businesses continue to expand and dominate use of the alley, destroying the buffer between their activities and my quiet use and enjoyment of my home. I object to the proposed expansion to the use of vacuums at the car wash as set forth in the above case number. The car wash has not proven to be a responsible corporate citizen that respects the rights of its residential neighbors. Trash is picked up in locations and at times when it should not be. There is constant noise coming from the car wash, and increasing the number of vacuums will only increase that noise. The city has a duty to balance the needs of businesses and their adjoining residential neighbors. The city has allowed special use permits for lighting, vacuums, and other use of the alley that separates the businesses from the residential neighbors. This has led to disruption and interference with the quiet use and enjoyment of residential properties. I own one of the affected properties, and my concerns have continually been taking a backseat to the interests, the commercial interests on John R. The result is a less friendly, noisier, and busier community that is less appealing, that is a less appealing place to live. The city needs to stand for the average person. More vacuums will only lead to more noise, more traffic, more congestion, and more disturbance. The council must consider the increase of these factors under 10.201 of the zoning appendix. The activity will produce more garbage, more noise, and more traffic. These elements will be nexus to the occupants of the nearby properties, Section 10.201 subsection 4i. This nexus effect greatly outweighs any nominal effect on the business. The car wash will still have vacuums and the ability to operate. A few more dollars in the owner's pockets can't outweigh the ability of regular law-abiding people from enjoying their quiet use and enjoyment of their property. If it does, in the council's eyes, there is something wrong. Please make this part of the official record by either reading or exhibiting it into the record. Thank you. Kevin Trabukie.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Wright, before you speak, can we get a motion from council?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So can I get a motion from council regarding this? If I can get a motion to approve or to deny.
Your Honor.
I'll make a motion that we deny the request from North Point.
All right, is there support?
Support denied.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Can I ask that Councilman Fleming, I guess elaborate on his motion to deny?
I don't think that needs to be a proper, you know, do we need to give a reason based on this, or?
Well.
My reasoning behind the denial is that, you know, that I see that you could replace your current system for, for four new, four new vacuums that would lower the decibel volume that the community has. But on top of that, that, I've used your car wash before, and to me, the small parking lot itself is very small turnaround vehicles. So if I put eight vehicles in your parking lot, right, for instance, they're there plus the traffic that's going around into your car wash and coming out the other end, those eight vehicles are going to have a hard time turning around, because there's no way to, they can continue on one-way traffic and exit unless they're going to go, you know, they're not going to go back into the car wash, you know. So that's my concern with the entire improvement here, that adding more stations is going to cause more issues that would actually cause a condition where you could have a collision in your parking lot with vehicles. That's all I see of. Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burns?
Your Honor, if this was to be denied, I would recommend that it was based upon it not being compatible with the harmony of the neighborhood as the reason for the denial. I also note that we did do a legal review of the proposal today, and we do have some concerns regarding that the parcel is currently not compliant with their site plan in regards to their garbage removal, as well as they've created a non-compliance with a neighboring partner, a neighboring business that they're partnering with in regards to non-compliance with garbage removal. And if this was to be approved, we would recommend that it isn't, is either postponed to a date to be determined where those violations have been remediated, or else those would be included as conditions of the approval.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I have two quick questions, but before that, a comment that the maker and the support, once we have discussion, could amend the motion to include anything that our attorney would like to be included in that motion. But I have two, two questions. The first for staff, if I'm reading this correctly, when, when it was first granted approval, all the way back in 2003, I was a senior graduating from Lanfor High School at that time, so I'd been in business for a while. But there were no vacuums at that time. In 2005, a five-to-one vote, the city council approved two vacuums, and I'm seeing today we're going from four to eight. Is there a time that we approved an additional two that's not on my report?
Yeah, we couldn't, counsel, we could not find any formal approvals of additional vacuums beyond what was originally approved from the original special, well, the original special approval was no vacuums. There was one modification in 2005 to approve the vacuums, which was to, from that point forward, we don't have any formal building plans. formal building plans or site plans which accommodated that, those additional vacuums. Realistically, it should have gone through a similar process like this, which would be to amend the site plan, or amend the special use to increase the number of vacuums.
Okay. So, that could not have been done administratively. It would have had to have been an action from council?
There's, you know, there's, different zoning administrators have different opinions on processes. It's, it's my opinion that if you're increasing an external impact like this, where special approval was originally granted, it should go through it a similar process. Either way, it would have had to go through some type of site plan, which we would have had a record of based on the timing of it in our BSNA system, and we could not find any, any evidence of that.
Okay. So, so regardless, then, of what happens tonight, we should put on the agenda for a future date to raise from two to four? So, that way, it would be, you know, their current use would be allowed?
I believe we should probably have a discuss, maybe a discussion with our legal counsel to see how we want to do it. There may be some...
Okay.
Statutes of limitation that we might want to discuss. I can't say for certain how we want to approach that. But it was originally approved for two in the special approval.
Thank you for that. I was reading through the minutes, and I didn't see anything. The other question I had is on the noise ordinance. We, what, about a year and a half ago, we changed our, our noise ordinance for businesses that have external speakers and entertainment businesses, like, like bars and restaurants that might be playing music. And it was a certain decibel level at the adjoining property line. So, if there's residential behind, they should not hear the music. And so, that was, that was the law. I don't know what the, what the number is on that, but I think it was said by the owner or the general manager that it'd be like thirty-two decibels or something at the property line. Would that be above or below the threshold that we approved for, like, external speakers and live music?
I'm not sure on that. Mayor Portem, I'd have to check to see what the ordinance says. We do have a noise ordinance outside of the zoning ordinance, which would still have to be met. These vacuums would still need to meet those levels regardless. But I unfortunately don't have that ordinance in front of me that lists the specific decibel levels.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes.
In regards to the number of vacuums, we need to delve into that a little bit, but there was a two thousand site, seventeen site plan that may have addressed that, and it may not have been properly addressed, but it may have been addressed in a manner that we just need to be careful about how we review what's going on. And again, we don't want to diminish this business. We just want to make sure that he's in compliance with the city policies and codes.
Your honor, could I offer an amendment to the motion to include, the subject site is zone B three general business, which is intended to provide sites for more diversified business types and are often located so as to serve passive buyer traffic. The proposed modifications are not consistent with the intent of B three zoning district and are not compatible, compatible with the principal uses permitted by in right B three zoning district. And also, the subject site is immediately adjacent to properties improved with and zone for residential and commercial uses, and is located across the street from auto-oriented uses and commercial zoning. The proposed modifications are not compatible, compatible with adjacent land uses. And also, the proposed modifications are not consistent with the site's commercial, future land use designation, and are not aligned with the goals and objectives stated in the twenty twenty-one Madison Heights master plan. And finally, the proposed, the proposed modifications are not designed as to location size, intensity, site layout, and periods of operation to eliminate any possible nuisances, which might be noxious to the occupants, obnoxious to the occupants of any nearby properties. Based on the above findings, the proposed modifications do not generally satisfy the special approval review standards and criteria listed in section ten point two zero one four.
All right. Is the maker okay making that change?
Yeah, we'll accept.
Support? All right. So, we have a modification to the denial. Is there any other comment? Any one else? All right. I am concerned that we have these extra vacuums that we don't know about, that we don't seem to have on here. And so, I, that's actually something I'd like to take a look into. Yeah, please.
So, it's my understanding that when, back in two thousand five, we were actually approved for the four vacuums. So, I don't know if that's a misprint on your end, but when that was done back then, we were definitely approved for the four vacuums. Because I know originally when we built the site in two thousand five, we had, we had to go back like a year later to get the approval for the vacuums. And I don't know where the two number came from, but we immediately put in those four vacuums after that, had approval, all the electrical, everything was completely done from that point forward. So, I'm not understanding exactly where that's coming from. So, like I said, that's the one thing I wanted to address. The other thing I wanted to address, I know you had some concerns about traffic flow and whatnot. I actually took some pictures of, there are one, if you want to actually just pass these down a little bit. That is a car wash on Dequender Road. This is Jack's car wash on Mount. This is Jack's car wash on Maple and Troy. And I thought I had one more. This is our Roseville site that we just did. All of these have less footprint of traffic space than our current site right now on John R. So, and all of them have these, including both of the Jack's locations, both on Mount and in Maple.
Sorry, they have less of a footprint?
They have less of a footprint than what we have on our John R. location.
Okay. And...
And they have the exact same layout of vacuums that we're, we're looking to do here at the John R. location.
Okay. So, the noise situation?
Yep.
So, you're saying it's going to be thirty-eight decibels, which is, it's actually going to be quieter than it is now?
Essentially, from outside where the customers or where our neighbor is, physically would be impossible to hear the vacuums running because of the noise producer is actually inside of the building. So, from outside of the building, it's, me talking right now is louder than what all of these vacuums running would be. So, noise decibels from an environmental standpoint of noise pollution, I mean, it's, we're going from seventy decibels plus per vacuum cleaner, and we have four of them out there, down to literally almost nothing. The whoosh of just the sound of the suction coming from that individual nozzle that maybe you'd be able to hear in your hand or at your carpet.
Right.
So, literally, noise pollution would go down to zero. So...
Thomas, I believe it was?
Would hear nothing at all when it comes to the vacuums. Also, since these are going to be free vacuums, we're going to be shutting them down at eight o'clock in the evening, which no customers then will be on our parking lot after eight o'clock because there's no service left. Whereas now, our vacuums are currently open to the public, where they're more than welcome to be there late at night, you know, and you get noise pollution from people playing their stereos, dropping their trash on the ground. Also, from the trash situation, we're going to go from four canisters to nine canisters, which now canister will be on either side of the vehicle, which allows the person then to either throw their trash conveniently in either side instead of maybe dropping it on the ground. Even though we are religiously always out there taking care of the property, cleaning it up, it's just good business. So, if any of you've been to our property before, we always make sure that it's clean. So...
Okay. And the, the gentleman complained it wasn't just the vacuums, it was the radios, the music.
Mm-hmm.
So, is that going to be addressed?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. So, like I said, we, anytime there is a situation where if somebody is playing their radio too loud, we do address that with them, you know, that there is, you know, we do it politely. Hey, there are neighbors around here. They have children. They have babies. Please be respectful to our neighbors. We want to be a part of the community. So, we absolutely do that. So, the nice thing is too now, is that come eight o'clock, there's no reason, nobody should be on our parking lot period. So...
Everyone's just finishing for the day.
Yeah. And, you know, like I said, I've, I've looked at my cameras late at night, and I have seen customers there late at night. Everybody, some people work midnights, you know, and that's when they'll take advantage of using those vacuum cleaners are late at night, you know. And those vacuums are outside, you know. They do operate, you know, throughout the evening. So, that, that will be, you know, so anything, honestly, this is going to be a better, you know, for our neighbors, one hundred percent.
And I have one last question. I think Mr. Mayor has a question as well with regards to the footprint. So, this is not, you're not expanding a building or anything. You're just putting in a different system, which is quieter.
Yeah, considerably quieter. And essentially, all we're doing is, I mean, theoretically, right now, we could take the four vacuums that we have and put a double arch on those vacuums so that people could use it on both sides of the vacuum, and it's the same situation. So, it's the same footprint. It's just more convenient. This is the new, modern way that people use vacuums now. They don't drag the hose across the ground. They don't drag it through their vehicle. They use one on either side, on the passenger side and driver's side of their car. It's just the new, modern way that we do it. So, things change. We always want to be up, you know, with the modern age. We want to be able to be competitive with our new competitors coming in. So, for us to do that, this is kind of what we need to do. So...
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have a question for him or a comment?
He answered it. So, today, those vacuums are available twenty-four hours a day?
Theoretically, yes.
In the new world, they're going to shut off at eight o'clock?
At eight o'clock. Yep. So...
And you're really talking about moving those vacuums to, like, the middle of the parking lot, right?
No, 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 no. They're going to be exactly where they are right now.
How are you going to pull?
The only thing we're doing is instead of the cars like this, they're now like this.
But how do I pull through to go through the car wash?
Back up and pull through. So, here I can actually, I got a drawing for you.
Potential traffic that's coming in just to get the car washed?
Let me show you. Actually, Brian, do you have that?
I think I have this.
There may be a...
Yeah, I got the diagrams here. I was just kind of reading that, that you were moving those away from the building. So, you could...
No, I'm actually putting them closer to the building because all these now are just, the unit itself is inside of the building now, and it's just one vacuum motor instead of four individual vacuum motors that run from all. So, then the motor turns on, and it just, as each person pulls hose off, the motor will wind up more and more to create more suction for each of those hoses.
And then I have to back up and go through. So, any traffic coming in, I'm going to be backing into the...
You back up here and go through. Correct.
And just, just make sure I'm on the same page. Mark, you said eight vacuums. I think you're talking nine vacuums with eight parking stalls.
Eight parking, yeah, because there's an outside one that either side, that's not, you're not using it. There are definitely nine vacuums we're in.
Yeah, nine arches, I guess you would call it. Yeah. So...
Yeah, the stanchions on the end will just only have one single hose. So, the cus, the, the customers don't have to share on the other side or drag it over their vehicle. They can just pull it off, do that side, go the other side, use that side. That's, that's, that's why there's nine and then eight vacuum stalls.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Any questions for?
Well, I, I have a question for the gentleman, the Vietnam veteran. Do you have any comments to rebuttal them, what they said?
What you're saying?
Yeah, what they, how they're...
It's not the noise of the vacuum.
Actually, sorry, if, can you, sorry, if you can speak at the podium. Is it the noise of the music?
The noise of the customers.
Okay.
It's the people that come in there when they're not open and the vacuums are still working.
Right.
The trash, I'm retired, so I see a lot. I take my dog for a walk around the block. I, I see it all. And after forty-seven years, I've grown to where now I'm home all the time, and I talk to my neighbors who are sick and elderly. They're sick of it, too. But they're afraid to say anything. And it's not the noise of the vacuum, it's the customers. But none of his employees go out there and tell him to turn the radios down. Very rare do I see anybody out there picking up trash because I'm picking it up in my yard on a nice windy day. And I have a dog that eats this trash, and I have twenty thousand dollars in vet bills from eating all this trash. It used to be McDonald's. Now, we're getting it from the car wash and whatever these people throw out of their cars. Sure, he can't be there to maintain it all the time, but by adding more, you're adding more traffic. You're going to pull in. What if they just want the vacuum going to car wash? Now, you're going to have a traffic jam there when they're trying to back out to get out. It's a narrow, narrow parking lot. I live behind Suzie's parking lot. Now, they're building a gym there. And I asked this guy about the parking because my house is set back. And they, they don't care. It's all about the money. And I don't think these extra vacuums is going to do, improve his business. It might make him a few more bucks, but it's going to cause the neighborhood more trash, more noise, more traffic. And I don't know how many of you've driven up and down John R. lately, but it's like a, a dirt road, you know. And I've emailed a lot of you questioning, please do something. We're tired of it, you know. So, now we're going to add more trash, more traffic. I just, I'm too old to move. I can't afford to move. But I'm tired of the noise, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know what else to say about it. I mean, people are people. You can't monitor these people constantly, but by eliminating more of these vacuums, it's going to be less trash. Can't be, you know, I, just to the point of, I'm tired. And then when I asked him about his pumper truck, that he comes on an average twice a year, I walked over and said, listen, man, seven o'clock in the morning, I know you're, you're legal at seven, but the thing is so loud, it's vibrating the houses.
Okay. So, that, that seems to be a diff, sir, sir, thank you. That seems to be a different issue. The pumper truck seems to be a different issue, which I don't think is going to change.
But I'm just trying to relate to, to all this noise is, is just...
Right. So, it's, I...
When he built this thing, let me tell you. When he built this thing, I've come to the council meeting because I got a letter in the mail, and it would say there would be no noise. Well, it doesn't matter if it's vacuum noise, car noise, whatever, there's noise.
Thank you. So, I think what, what I'm hearing is that you're against this because of the noise, not necessarily the vacuum, because the vacuum will be quieter, but because of the people noise, the music and that kind of thing. And you're against the garbage that's going, that's there now?
The garbage issue.
Okay. And then the twice-a-year pumper truck, which is loud?
Which is extremely loud.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your thoughts. Thank you so much for sharing. And I will ask Mr. Gunn, I'd like to ask Mr. Gunn a question specifically about this. The, the pumper truck that comes twice a year?
Mm-hmm. Once a year.
Sorry?
It's once a year.
Once a year. Okay. And it comes once or twice a year. And how long is it there for?
Three hours, maybe.
All right. Is it possible to schedule it not at seven in the morning or until eight o'clock at night? Like, to do it more of a during-the-day type thing when people are awake?
Yes. I mean, it's, unfortunately, it kind of has to, the company comes from Lansing. There's literally one company in the state that does this. And it's, we can set a date, and they're like, hey, Steve, we can get you in on this time. Because they come in and they do multiple sites at once. So, we could definitely direct them to say, let's do one of our other locations first.
Okay.
And then they can come to the Madison Heights location at, say, eleven o'clock, noon. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
It's, yeah. I mean, it, we always definitely, and I always make sure to tell the guys when they do show up, do not start up that truck before seven o'clock. Do not run it past, I believe it's eleven o'clock, which we've never ever done that, kind of late. And unfortunately, it's, it's the lesser of two evils. Do you do eleven o'clock in the evening, running it, you know, late at night, or do you do it early in the morning? If they can come in the middle of the day in a perfect world, I have no problem with that. And I definitely would like to do that if possible, sure. But I have no problems doing that. So...
And, and the garb...
And it is loud. I, I, I understand his concerns on that. It's a loud truck, and it's kind of a droning noise. So, I mean, unfortunately, it's just, we, we have to do it. It's the only way that we can...
Right.
From an EPA standpoint, clean out our pits.
The garbage situation?
Mm-hmm.
Is there trash flying around? I, I don't, I don't believe I've ever seen anything with code. So, if there's tr, I guess this isn't actually even for you. If there's trash coming into your yard, sir, from a local business, are you letting the city know? You don't have to answer that. I guess it's more of a, you do need to let the city know because this is the first I've heard about trash flying around into people's yards. So, which is not okay.
Oh, a hundred percent it's not. I mean, we go out there literally, I mean, half hour, hour, where we constantly, I, I force my staff to meticulously maintain their sites just because I always tell everybody, you know, first impression means everything. If you went to a restaurant and you grabbed the front door and it was greasy and nasty and the weeds were this tall, you can only imagine what that back kitchen looks like, and you wouldn't want to eat there. It's the same thing with my business. I make sure that the lawn's always cut, that the weeds are pulled, that, you know, the trash is cleaned, that the hoses are hung up, that everything is wiped down and cleaned, because maintenance is very important to us. So...
Thank you. Mr. Burns?
From a code enforcement perspective, we haven't had issues with him in regards to citations or necessary complaints about litter. The problem we're having, sir... The problem we're having, sir, is that you aren't using the approved dumpster enclosure for your trash on your property and you're illegally dumping another illegal dumpster on your neighbor's property.
It's our dumpster.
But it's on your neighbor's property and it's not been approved by any site plan.
So that dumpster.
So you're not in compliance with your site plan for the approved garbage disposal. We need you to remedy that.
So we're, I mean, we have a area to put it, which we could. It just requires the truck to basically come onto our parking lot and the reason that it was moved and we got approval from, I don't know who it was, back in the day to move it in the back because we had a variance on that, or adhesion variance on the back section there. And they said it was no problem for us to move it back there since that alleyway is closed off. It's been back there for literally, actually, I think, no, I think it's been the whole life of the car wash, 20 years now since 2009.
Well, that's where we're getting the, the noise complaints. That's where we're getting the trash complaints. And your site plan's approved for an enclosed dumpster, which you're not using, and we need to remedy that.
So we just need to move the dumpster back to the.
You need to talk with planning and get compliant with your site plan.
We just got to move the dumpster. We already have a dumpster holder.
But you shouldn't be on the neighbor's property.
It's on our property.
Well.
Actually, I got a picture of it right here. Would like to see it. That's not our dumpster right there. That's our neighbor's dumpster.
Right. And according to your neighbor, you've been using the dumpster that's right next to it, which is your dumpster.
Which is behind the dumpster.
Which is on, which is on the property of the veterinarian.
No, no.
Well, I had a code enforcement officer over there who would disagree with it.
Okay. You know what, gentlemen? I think we're really getting to the weeds on this.
Yeah, so.
All right. So I, I do think that regardless of what happens tonight, I, I think it sounds like there are a few issues that need to be addressed between our, our, between the city and your property regarding whether it was two or four vacuums that were originally approved and the location and use of the dumpster.
Your Honor.
So yes, please.
Just to, to clarify, the applicant can reapply if this is denied. Correct?
Mr. Burns?
Normally with a, with a denial, you have to wait till the next council session to reapply. I'd recommend if you're going to consider denying it or want more time to postpone it to a date certain for conditions to be met.
I'm, I'm personally not interested in making a substitute motion, but, you know, if the applicant wants to reapply, I'm a little concerned about the record that we have here. And back then, we would record council meetings on a VHS tape that would then get uploaded to YouTube. So I don't know if we have a digital record of that meeting, but if we do, that's something that I, and I'm assuming other council members would like to see for what was approved in the original. Was the, was the dumpster and the enclosure that's not being kept? Was it two vacuums or four? And how all of that's going to work? Definitely want to have that. I think the, the challenging thing too is we don't have a firm enough understanding. Well, I'll speak for me. I don't have a firm enough understanding of the traffic flow and whether it's going to increase traffic onto John R. as well as the noise, since it's a budding residential, to be able to make a decision tonight that's anything different than a no. But.
Well, in the, in the stuff that we gave you, there's actually a bunch of information about that. That shows decibel readings from the actual, you know, machines and whatnot. I don't know if you read through it or not.
Yes, but the, sorry, and your honor, I don't, I don't want to go back and forth with the, the public. But the challenge is our noise ordinance that we hold other businesses to is based on what it is at the property line. Where residents like the one that you've heard from, can they hear it or not? And it's not only to the vacuum because now you have additional, additional spots that could then potentially be noise from individual vehicles. So now you'll have more vehicles. And I don't know that we have a deep enough, I'll speak for me. I don't have a deep enough understanding of what that will be at the property line to make the right, and you know, the informed decision that we would need to make tonight for anything that would be an approval. So my vote would be no, but I think as our city attorneys mentioned, there are issues that need to be worked out. When those are worked out, I, I would encourage the applicant to resubmit with some additional information.
Your honor?
Yes. I would, I would submit a substitute motion to, let's see, so to postpone action on the special approval request to allow verification, complimate, complimate, comp-
Confirmation.
Compilation or submission of additional supplemental information and to address these concerns. Do we need to set a date?
You could say at, back at staff's discretion.
At, at staff's discretion. I submit that as a substitute motion.
All right. So support for the substitute?
I'll support that motion.
All right. So we now have a new motion on the floor. And that is to postpone this, which will give the city and the applicant time to work through where we seem to have a lot of questions. And then staff can bring it back. Okay? Yes?
As a comment on that, I just think that, you know, part of what's coming up here is that the question whether or not, you know, the, the vacuums are one thing and that's something, that's what we're talking about today. Because the big issues that are coming up here are more a question of like, are you a good neighbor in this community? Are you a good corporate citizen? Are you doing good in the community? And are you taking care of the neighbors as well as you're taking care of yourself? And I think those things need to be addressed. Nobody wants any, like, nobody wants to like stifle a business. We want our businesses to do well. So we want you to do well. We just want you to be a good corporate neighbor. We want to make sure that all the ducks are in a row and all the boxes are checked before we can make additional special approvals to anything.
Absolutely. Like I said, I've been in this community for 20-plus years. So, I mean, I donate to the police departments, I donate to the fire departments.
Your honor, I don't think that's a, and I, I'm not asking for a comment. I'm just reading you. I understand that. Yeah. I think, I think we've, we're hearing about all these other issues. And so there seems to be a lot of things here that are a little bit muddied. And we just need to get some clarification on this. Okay?
Your, your honor?
Other questions?
So our expert is right behind him. I mean, he's here right now. Why not ask him now? You, you were standing. I, I assumed you were thinking that you were going to get called, huh?
I was itching to speak. I just wanted to.
Please.
Yeah, your honor. Just to settle or to clarify the postpone versus deny paths, we did just adopt new zoning ordinance. So in our new zoning ordinance, this site becomes, it's allowed to continue, but it's a legally non-conforming use. So a postponement would allow it to continue under the old zoning ordinance as it's presented today. Whereas a denial, we would have to meet with council to see if we could even accept a resubmital because it's no longer a permitted use in the district. Regarding the, the minutes, that is something we could clarify as part, the minutes from old meetings, number of vacuums, that is something we could clarify at the direction of council to bring back to you at a, an upcoming meeting if this is brought back to you. As well as the other concerns I'm hearing are the circulation, the trash and the dumpster enclosure, and the noise. Staff, we would recommend meeting with the applicant to discuss a, a plan of operation for these and, and have them come back with a more solidified game plan for these issues.
All right, thank you.
Your honor, I have a question. Does, do you believe, addressing our building department, do you believe that there's a solvable issue for the one-way vehicle circulation?
Yeah, this was, this meeting with our technical or site plan review committee, this was the, the main concern, which was it's set up as a one-way circulation via the angled. And with discussions with the applicant, it was intended that they would have to use the vac- or customers would have to use the vacuums prior to entering the wash. And the discussion was, well, how can we enforce this? That's something that I think we may want to delve further into to get more clarification about making sure customers aren't coming in. If they're free vacuums, how can we ensure that they're not just using them pulling out? And the pulling out action is the main concern because of the angled orientation of them. We don't want to have a traffic, them having to do a big T-turn type of turnaround and then exiting out of the one-way. So these are items that I believe we could discuss with the applicant and have them provide more details at an upcoming meeting.
All right, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from council?
Your honor, I have just one. I mean, we, we talked about the motor itself, but if we're checking into this more, can we check into like the decibels of the actual vacuum? Because, I mean, those, you go from four to eight, that's pretty loud. Like those vacuums are not quiet, unless they are. I mean, I guess I want to know to answer that question.
People brought you in this room, you wouldn't even hear literally from the outside. You'd be like, shh, that'd be it.
That's your opinion.
Yeah, I was about to say.
Okay, everyone, everyone, hey! Everyone. Come on. Okay. I think, I think that we're, we're going to go round in circles here. It seems pretty obvious, no one, this is not going to get approved tonight. So the question is, are we going to deny it or postpone it? Okay? And there seem to be a lot of questions about this. And I think we need to get some answers, not tonight, but we need to get some answers. You know, what is the current decibel level now? What will it be if this is approved? Okay? That, that's something, the, the driving part of it, you know, the, the way that's going in, what's going to stop people from pulling in, vacuuming, and then leaving. So these are all sorts of questions that we need further information on. So I am ready to vote to postpone it while it gives the applicant and, and planning department time to go through all of these answers. But if there's more discussion, I'm fine having the discussion. I just think that we're going to be going round in circles with a lot of, I don't know yet. We're going to have to figure that one out and look into it. So if there's other discussion?
Your honor?
Yes?
Just, just one thing, and I, I will, I will support the, the postpone motion because, you know, that's the only way that you'd be able to get this, if we check all the, you know, dot all the i's, cross all the t's, as Council Roebuck talked about. But I would recommend to the owner that as an act of good faith and to be able to help our staff determine what the noise levels would be after eight o'clock, that you shut off your existing vacuums at eight for the time that our staff is doing due, this due diligence as a good faith gesture to the neighbors to be able to show what that actually would look like if it's in operation.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion from council? All right. So the motion before us was made by Council Roebuck, and it was supported by Councilman Fleming. And it is to postpone this until staff brings it back to us. All right? So all in favor of postponing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who do not want to postpone signify by saying no. All right. So we are postponing this. Staff will be in touch with you. All right? Thank you. And next up, also from the CED director, a special approval PSP 24-04. It's Mobility Resource Associates' modifications to outdoor storage at 950 East Whitcomb Avenue.
The applicant Mobile Resource Associates, Inc., doing business as MRA, requests modification to a previously approved special approval application for MRA located at 950 East Whitcomb Avenue. The property is owned M1 Light Industrial. MRA is an event marketing and logistics company that specializes in the production, sale, and lease of custom vehicles and semi-trailers which are outfitted with exhibits and training facilities. The applicant received special approval in 2011 with the condition that all display trailers be stored within the building or in one of the four designated outdoor parking spaces south of the building. The applicant requests a modification to the special approval to increase the size of the designated outdoor storage area for vehicles and train, trailers. Section 10.505(b)(2) of the zoning ordinance regulates the parking and storage of commercial vehicles, including trucks, recreational vehicles, and large trailers. This section states that trucks and some detached semi-trailers shall only be stored in the storage area designated on an approved site plan in industrial districts. Given the unique nature of the business, which requires the maintenance and storage of large vehicles and trailers, staff acknowledges the need to expand beyond the previously approved storage space. Additionally, given the surrounding industrial character of the area, the negative external impacts of the increased outdoor vehicle storage area shall be minimal. In order to reduce the visual impacts of the vehicle storage on Whitcomb Avenue, staff recommends that additional landscaping be planted adjacent to the Whitcomb right-of-way. The previous condition related to the vehicle repair location shall remain intact. Per Section 10.201(4K), city council may impose conditions in granting special approval that it deems necessary to fulfill the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. If council approves, moves to approve the special approval application, staff recommends the following conditions to meet the intent and purpose of the M1 zoning district and the spirit of the zoning ordinance. The outdoor storage of trucks, trailers, semi-trailers, and all other display vehicles shall be limited to the areas depicted on the submitted plot plan. Minor modifications that do not significantly alter the spirit or intent of the plot plan may be approved administratively by staff. Additional landscaping shall be planted adjacent to Whitcomb Avenue right-of-way in coordination with staff to further screen the vehicle storage on-site. All repairs shall be conducted entirely within the building. Disabled vehicles and vehicles in disrepair shall be stored within the building. Any action, either approval or denial, taken shall be, shall include process findings based on the special approval review standards and criteria.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open this to the public to speak specifically on this. If there's anyone who wishes to speak? If you could just give your name, information, please.
Good evening. David Randazzo, I'm the CFO of Mobility Resource Associates. I do have, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I do have some letters from the neighbors that said they were okay with the extra parking Just to clarify that our units do not just sit there and are just parked. They're in and out constantly because they're going out on tours. We do mobile event tours. We're actually doing one for the STEM program here in Oakland County Schools. So like their trailer comes to our facility, spends a day or two, you know, we do some updates, clean it up. The school board comes out to it, has a meeting, and then we're out back going to local schools.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor?
Yes?
I'd like to move to approve special approval request number PSP 2404 based upon the findings pertaining to the special approval criteria of Section 10.201(4).
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your honor, I'll support, but that also includes the conditions that the city manager mentioned. I accept.
Okay, thank you. So a motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your honor?
Yes?[1640.23]
So I had the privilege of working at 999 Tecrow. My office was there for, I don't know, two and a half years, so y'all were my neighbor. So the letters are no surprise to me. I, I think, you know, not only is this an industrial area where this is perfectly acceptable, but I think they're, they do a good job of not disrupting anything around them. And I have personally, you know, witnessed that and a lot of firsthand experience. I also don't think that the trucks are visually negative. If anything, I, I think it, they look great. A lot of eye-popping graphics and designs. And, you know, I think with the direction that, you know, this council has, has gone in years past, I actually think it's an, it's an asset to have some of those designs and some color popping as you're driving through industrial, drive in Whitcomb. So I'm fully in support. The only question I suppose I have is, is this going to be enough space, you know, as your business grows? Or will you be right back here?
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments from counsel? Excuse me. All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion approved, thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on anything they would like. I asked you to come to the podium. I can give you three minutes. All right, seeing no one wishing to speak, I'm going to close meeting open to the public. We have the consent agenda. We've, we've already done the proclamation for national gun violence. Can I get approval for the consent agenda, please?
Your Honor.
Yes?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented minus the one.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I will support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then finally, we have reports for the Skynet IT contractor, Microsoft Office 365 licenses.
Skynet Innovations, the city's IT contractor, who's also with us tonight, is requesting approval of the purchase of Microsoft 365 P1, G1, and G3 license in the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents. Funds are budgeted and available for this purchase.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor.
Yes?
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of Microsoft licenses in the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Aye.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes?
Just really quick, I know this move to 365 is something that myself and I, the rest of ITAC support. The only question that I have though is whether or not we could get discounted rates if we were doing a multi-year contract instead of doing this a year at a time, since we know we're not going to be switching from Office 365 anytime soon. Just wondering if our contractor could, could answer that, what type of discounts could be available, maybe not this year, but in future years if we do like a three-year contract.
So I'll have to double-check for that for you, but I do know they offer them in one, three, and five years. So I can, I can get the information back to you.
Your, Your Honor, I, I think the, oh.
Mrs. Heflin, coffee.
Oh, got it. I will, I will pause for a second.
Any good jokes?
I just keep going. Okay, so I, I'd like to know what that is. And so I, I, I would, I would amend my motion, and I'll, I'll rely on our attorney for this. But I'd like to be able to give staff the flexibility to be able to change this to a multi-year deal if we're only paying out the first year. Because typically on a multi-year deal, it, it doesn't have to be prepaid. So I'd love to give staff that flexibility if we can come back and see a three or a five-year, and the annual rate is lower, saving us money. Because I, I don't think we're going to change Office 365. I mean, Google, like G Suite for Business is really the only alternative here. So if we're not going to switch from being a Microsoft shop, we should probably take advantage of the five-year deal. And then it also allows us to have that price locked in and fight against any additional inflation on those rates, you know, over the coming years. So I, I don't know how to, how to amend my motion.
I think if you made a motion that approved the purchase of Microsoft P1, G1, and 31 license at the lowest annual rate for up to five years, and that way we could look at it, and if it's one year, that's fine. If it's three years or five years, that's what we'll go with.
Okay, yeah, then consider my motion amended?
That's agreeable.
All right.
That's what, agreeable?
Agreed.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, support agrees with that?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. All right, thank you. And I invite closing comments, starting with Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Memorial Day Parade was great. The weather cooperated for us, so that was nice. I backed out of my driveway and it started raining, but by the time I got to my spot, it was done. So good deal on that. I had a great time in Mount Pleasant, learning lots of stuff at the MML. I left the Fish Academy. Looking forward to more opportunities like that. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm really excited. The city has once again, for the, for the third time in I think the last five or six years, been nominated for an MML Community Excellence Award. The Arts Board mural project was a top-four finalist, I believe five or six years ago, or it might be less than that, I don't know. And then Trail Tunes was a nominee. Neither time Madison Heights has taken it home. And so I'm hoping that this time, with the project being this amazing Civic Center campus and all the hoops that had to be jumped through to be able to get this done, I'm, I'm hopeful that, that we can walk away with a win this time. Though I will say, like, like any Oscar-nominated actor or actress, it is an honor just to be nominated. And so I'm really appreciative that out of all of the communities in Michigan and all of the projects that qualified, this is now the third time in, you know, very recent history that the city of Madison Heights has been nominated, which I think is a testament to the hard work of our staff. I think the innovative mindset of our residents and their willingness to, to support crazy changes like the Civic Center complex. And then this city council and those that came before having the vision to be able to support and execute some of these things in partnership with our staff. So yeah, really excited about that. And I'm keeping, I'm keeping my fingers crossed on that. It'd be nice to, to take home a win one of these times. And the last thing that I, I wanted to bring up, we've talked about it before. I know administratively we removed the, the program for memorial trees. And, you know, I said at the time that I disagreed with that, I disagree with it again. You know, I, I, I'm, it would be hypocritical of me, you know, having a memorial tree for my father and then, you know, knowing several people with memorial trees in our parks. It'd be hypocritical of me not to support that. And so I'd, I'd like to see that program reinstated. You know, I said at the time when we pulled it, I know that there was costs associated with replacing the plaques and the upkeep and everything. My recommendation would be raise the price of each of these memorial trees to be able to cover the expected long-term costs. And if nobody buys them, then that's fine. But I think that is an important program. During a time when our city struggled to plant trees in our parks, we relied on that program to do it. And it has become a great way that residents can, you know, invest in the city that their loved ones loved and, and help it to improve. And maybe there are alternatives, maybe there are things that we haven't looked at. You know, I know the bench program is closely associated. And maybe there's other things that we can do as a part of a lot of, you know, the new projects and programs. I thought the, the memorial placard thing that replaced all the trees from the Active Adult Center, I thought that was really great. And it's, you know, it's, it's beautiful, it's respectful, and, you know, it shows, it shows that we value the investment that those residents made through the years honoring their loved ones and supporting the city. So yeah, I'd like to bring that, that program back. And I, I don't know what type of limitations we need, and I don't know what type of price increase we need to have. But I, I would like to see that program returned. That's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wright?
I just wanted to echo the sentiments earlier of congratulating all the, the young leaders transitioning from everything that Counsel Robach talked about, from preschool to college to high school. Like this is, your inheritance is the future. Be careful with it. And just remind everyone it's Mental Health Awareness Month, and to just remember to be kind.
All right, thank you. Mr. Burns, anything from attorneys?
Just briefly, based upon Councilman Quinn's statement about mental health and the earlier presentation, National Gun Violence, I want to give some credit to our police department today. We had a woman who was shopping around to buy a weapon. They, a couple of retailers centers a police station because you're now required to get a gun purchase permit. She did qualify for the permit, but she left before it could be issued. Quick thinking by the police department identified that a domestic violence call where she was threatening people, threatening to shoot up a number of properties, was the same woman who had filed for the gun permit. Based upon that, we were able to de-escalate the situation, get her some mental health treatment. But we also took steps to use the new red flag law. We're one of the first police departments in the county to actually file one of these petitions to get a whole place so she can't purchase a, a weapon in the near future. So we also found she did have a history of assaultive behavior, so it was a legitimate threat. We're not trying to take guns away from people under the Second Amendment, but we also want to make sure that these violence stops. And our officers did an incredible job on trying to protect our community, and I appreciate what they did today.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
No comment today.
Anything from the clerk's office?
Nothing today.
Counsel Robach?
I just want to say, Mr. Burns, thank you for sharing that. I hadn't heard that story yet. And that is a powerful statement for just how a law like that can protect people before injury happens, before people are hurt and killed. And I'm actually kind of choked up about it, but okay, thank you for sharing that. So this is the end of Asian American and Pacific Highlander, Islander Heritage Month for the month of May. I just want to, you know, recognize that we have such a rich community here, and I want to celebrate all those that are part of the Asian and Pacific Islander community here in Madison Heights and beyond. And last week, was it last, just last week and the week before? Everything's running together. Like all this end-of-school stuff is like, there's a lot of it. And I am, I have lost track of all my weeks. But the last couple of weeks, we've had a Friends of the Library book sale. And so I want to say thank you to all the people who volunteered to make that happen, and everybody who came out to purchase books that had been donated. I think they did like a beach book theme this year. And so it's all, you know, stuff that you can read on the beach for the summer. So that was well-received and a great success for the Friends. And also the Environmental Citizens Committee, we had our native plant sale on Sunday this past week and raised just about three thousand dollars in, in that sale after, after expenses. So that is a really wonderful opportunity for us to invest more in our native plants and, and native, or initiatives for Environmental Citizens Committee here in the city of Madison Heights. So thank you for everybody who came out and purchased and supported us. And I look forward to seeing everybody's gardens grow. And then this month, at the end of this week, we are in month of June, which is hard to believe. But, so Juneteenth is coming up, so I encourage everybody to get ready to participate in the Madison Heights Juneteenth celebration. It's a great opportunity to celebrate with the community. There's so many cool things that they put up on the stage and bring to the, the community. So please make sure that you put it on your calendar to attend the June, it's the Saturday before Juneteenth, which is June 15th this year?
15th.
Sorry, I'm not looking at a calendar. And then June is also Pride Month, so I want to say happy Pride to everyone. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming?
Yeah. First of all, I want to give a, a big thank you to the parade committee on their hard work on the Memorial Day Parade and the service to include Andy McGilvery and Martha Keough. They did a great job with the rest of the parade committee. And I want to thank also all the people who turned out for the parade itself. There was a large crowd across the parade route, and without the people watching the parade, you know, that makes a, pretty good for a lot of people who watched it also and turned up for the service itself. We had a lot of people for the service. And also, along with Counselman Mayor's statement about the weather, I was really concerned about the weather not, you know, being raining, and we'd have to cancel it. But it did work out, and it became a sunny day that day. And Counselman Mayor, he did have a convertible, so I'm glad that it did not rain on your parade. Anyways, I also thank all the organizations and individuals who also participated in the parade. And as a veteran myself, that really meant a bunch to myself, and I'm sure other veterans and families that have service members and their families. This month was also Jewish Heritage Month, and it's ending, but at the Detroit Historical Museum in Detroit, there is a large display about Jewish history in the city of Detroit. I know we had a bus trip earlier last year that went around and took you around Hastings Street and, and Black Bottom in Detroit where the Jewish community originated from. And now you can go down the Detroit Historical Museum and see all of the history of the Jewish people in Detroit. On June the 8th at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the NSN Police Department and the Crime Commission are putting on the bike rodeo. That's on a Saturday, June the 8th. And they'll be having, I think, the first 200 kids get bike helmets. You'll be able, the kids will be able to dunk in a water dunk tank, the police chief probably. And also, you'll be able, the kids can, you know, go in the fire trucks and the police cars and check things out. And the Harko, our K-9 will be there also. And then school's ending in a couple of weeks, and I want to say congratulations to the student body of the class of 2024 for Lanfair Madison High School. Congratulations, and I wish you all the best in your endeavors. And May is ending, this, you know, Mental Health Awareness Month. And I want to say that mental health is an issue that happens to people of all races, creeds, cultures, and religions. And we may need to make sure that we do not segregate those with mental health issues, creating an idea that their mental health issues are less worthiness than others. And I want to say that we should address mental health as a whole. So there's also a number 988. So if you're feeling, I know this has just been Memorial Day, but there's other issues that are going around in the world. And if you're feeling that you need somebody to talk to, make sure that you dial 988, and 24 hours a day, people are there to talk to you. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Soltes?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I want to thank the gentleman out here for showing up today. And you said you're a Vietnam vet? Were you in combat?
Over there twice.
Over there twice?
I was a forebender engineer, so we landed, unloaded, stuff started, loaded, back up, took back.
Well, thank you for your service. We really appreciate it.
You know, we talk about guns. And I was a German, these people on the street act better than, than we had, and we're fighting a war. It's terrible. And then you talk about mental health. My cousin in New York, he shot himself because he had mental health and hand-to-help.
That's very sad. And that, that's why we need these red flag laws, and we need people to get help that need it. So I'm very sorry about your cousin. It's very sad.
You know, my granddaughter was a Navy. It's unbelievable. I mean, I was involved with the school team with William here, with the band and everything. And these poor kids nowadays. My granddaughter, she's a therapist every week.
That's good. That's really good that she's getting the help she needs. So thank you. Thank you. That's, that's good. Yeah, it's good the help is out there. Is there anything else, Mr. Soltes?
No, I just wanted to thank you for, for your service.
All right, thank you. And I also would like to thank you for your service. You know, Memorial Day is about the people we lost. Veterans Day is about the people who came home. But, you know.
Why those companies?
Pardon?
Why those companies?
Yeah, well, just, you know, your service doesn't go unnoticed. So I appreciate it. I think I speak for all of us when I say that we appreciate your service. Last, or the last council meeting, we, we didn't mention it, but we lost Betty Huffman. She was married to Bill Huffman. She was the First Lady of Madison Heights for quite a while. And she was in her 90s. She, she came out when we had the fitness court opening at Huffman Park. She came out with her family. It was really nice to see her, you know, and she was so happy that she was able to come out and do something with us. And I, I talked to her quite a few times, but not so much in the recent past. And I was saddened to hear that, that we lost her. I guess it's, it's what's happening. A lot of our, the people that we grew up with, you know, just age takes its toll. I would like to echo the sentiments about the Memorial Day Parade. Andy McGilvery and Martha Keough did a great job. I would like to thank Councilman Mayor for offering up his convertible. Our, our World War II veteran is 99, and last year he was in a convertible. And I had thought that that had been organized beforehand, but apparently not. And so we went over and we asked Councilman Mayor, can he sit near me? Absolutely. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that.
I promised I might give him a ride next year, too. He said he'd be there.
Okay, well, I told them that I would make sure that we had, that we had something, that we would actually organize it beforehand. I also want to give a shout-out to Ricky Malik from, from Madison Schools. When the parade ended, we had our World War II veteran who has mobility issues. We also had our Gold Star Mother who had mobility issues. And getting from here to there was not going to be a, a fun task. But we were able to get, there was a carnival going on, and we were able to get someone who took, who took our veteran in the little go-kart. And then Ricky just pushed our Gold Star Mother the long way around to make sure, because I was standing there going, she's going to be going through mud. Like, how can we do this? So I just want to give a shout-out to Ricky for, for his help with that as well. A few weeks ago, we had the youth assistant breakfast, so a lot of the youth that are
A few weeks ago, we had the youth assistant breakfast, so a lot of the youth that are being talked about, you know, with finishing, going from one level to the next, we were able to honor them. So that was great. I appreciate everyone who came out for that. And then just throughout the last few weeks, there've been a lot of various Asian festivals going along, going around in the city as we come to the close of Asian American Heritage Month. Our next meeting, I believe, is at June 10th? I didn't actually check that. Yes, so our next meeting is going to be June 10th. The time is 8:56, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.
I don't know what...